Hybrid meeting. Call the meeting order at seven oh seven P M. Now, first order of business is the roll call. So Vice Chair Tesman.
Present.
Commissioner Alef. Oh, he's okay. Commissioner Kukup.
Present.
Commissioner Crone.
Present.
Commissioner Lambert.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Okay. A move that, as we've had prior notice, that we excuse Commissioner Alef from tonight's meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. All right.
So Alef is excused. And with that, move on to the next item where we approve the October sixteenth agenda as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda? Let's see, no hands. We've got all the panelists here. Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Council liaison report will recognize Council member Johnson.
Thank you, Chairman Rusiak. We just had a whole meeting of the C D C where the Chair of the Planning Commission was presenting the housing element and the economic development elements of the comprehensive plan. We had some good discussion, get back and forth. And as time goes on, he'll make its way through council as it always does. But I think that both elements were positively received, and I think the Community Development Committee was very appreciative of the hard work that the Planning Commission put into this. Let's go ahead and chat about the only thing that really is new, well, I guess two things. The City Council did adopt the A D U regulations before by the Planning Commission, so well done. Not much discussion there, other than again thanking the Planning Commission for their hard work on that, which makes our lives a whole lot easier, and we can move on to other things. And then the other thing was that the parkways, still some of the sensors are being worked on. That's something that has to be meet certain regulations that the state has, and it's just a little bit more of a process, but slowly but surely, we are getting the lights properly metered. And also the striping has begun. That said, it's been pretty wet, so we can only finish the striping when it's dry. So we're waiting for the next window. And hopefully, we'll be done with the strapping on the parkway ASAP. But yeah, I have a light report tonight. I'd be happy to take any questions, though, from the Planning Commission.
Next, let me do a quick roundtable. Any questions, Vice Chair Tesman?
None for me. Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Kilcup?
No, not for the question.
Mr. Crone?
None for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Nope.
Commissioner Smith?
None at this time.
So then I guess I've got one question, just out of curiosity. Any progress update on the model train area?
So that is still in conversations between mostly the tribe, the city administration, and Mr. Hambling and his organization. So it is is moving forward, but at a bit of a snail's pace to make sure that everyone's being heard in an equitable way before anything officially moves forward. So we'll we'll see. We still got a few more weeks, maybe a couple of months even, before the M O U extension expires, so. Now, hopefully, I'll have more to report in the future, but for now, it's just in conversations at that level.
Fair enough. And is there a, and it asked us, when I was on the hybrid thing, a record that the tribe could give us of their, I don't know how to put it, of their sacred areas and their mythology? I'm not, I probably shouldn't say mythology, of their.
Cultural significance.
Talking about, right?
Yeah, and then we call it the cultural significance of their land. Yeah, certainly. The big question is about the I always get the number wrong. I think it's Two Sisters Return.
Right.
Yes. Okay, got it. Thank you. Two Sisters Return. And that the property is across the street, and apparently there was some confusion as to what the exact boundaries are of all those things, especially because before settlers came into the area, boundaries was a much more loosely defined thing. So whereas what is is just not exact, other than what it says in whatever legal agreements exist. So looking back at those is kind of where where that next step is, and making sure that everyone understands where where those lines are now.
Is there maybe the origin story of the tribe? Right? The Two Sisters that includes that. Is that anywhere that we could access? That's really a.
That's a good question. Looking over at staff for help here. Yeah. I'm sure there's gotta be somewhere on their website, but I don't know. Yeah, go ahead.
There is, there is a little bit of information, but again, these these stories and this history is all verbal, and it's just passed down from one generation to another. So.
No, but eventually. You you think they'd write it down, particularly if they're gonna say you're too close to to an important area? I mean, it'd be nice if we knew that. That's my point. I mean, we've kind of bumped against sensitivities that we're unaware of. It'd be nice to be aware of. That's my own point.
Yeah, I do know that if you follow the trail that goes down to the to the bottom of the falls, and you follow it to where there's that really neat lookout from the base of the falls. They have a storyboard of of part of their creation story. I don't think that Two Sisters Return is mentioned in it, but don't quote me on that.
Okay, I mean, anyway.
I also know that.
Their sensitivity is easier if we do that.
Right. Yes, and I also know that the Model Train Museum is interested in having some cultural space for the tribe. I don't want to say exactly what it is, because I don't know what it is. We don't know yet, but I do know that the Model Train Museum is interested in in having some sort of space for the tribe to share their story, and what exactly that looks like will be up to what happens in those negotiations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's that's all I have.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, a move we approve the minutes dated October second, twenty twenty three. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right.
Okay. Okay, those minutes are approved. And is there anything between the approval of minutes and item number two? Community Development Director Otteja? Is there any design review boards or you know, other other items to discuss?
No.
Okay. So one thing, I'll kind of tee it up, is when I was elected or reelected Chair in January, there was a talk of you really ought to limit the chairs to two years. And so this coming January will be my second year. Now, I think if, you know, I mean, I'm very happy to say, a lot of new blood and others, you know, you guys can step up, we can go do that. So you ought to think about who you ought to have as a chair. I mean, they said after two years, we ought to turn stuff over. You know, if it's absolutely, you know, you guys are insisting that I do it, I'm not going to say no, but I think that it'd be wise to go ahead and follow that every two years, you know, put put new blood in, go do it, and whoever would would have the supreme enjoyment of the second half of the cop plan. So there you go. Anything else, Community Development Director Otteja?
No.
Okay, all right. Transportation Element Policy Review, item number three.
Yeah, let me bring that presentation up. We do have our critique consultant Carla online, and she'll be leading this discussion. So just one minute, Carla, are you there?
I am here. Yes, thank you.
Let me try to show that one more time.
It's good for a second.
Perfect.
No, that is not allowing me to draw a box around it. Let me just see if I can start. All right, Jeff.
All right, Emily, shall I go ahead and get us kicked off?
Please do so. We're ready to roll.
Okay, great. Well, planning commissioners, thank you for having me back again tonight. My name is Carla Bauton, and I'm an associate with critique consulting, who is been contracted by the city to assist you in the transportation element. So as you called, two weeks ago, I provided a kind of overview and transportation planning under the Growth Management Act, and so today we're going to go ahead and dive into our policies, a policy review for the transportation element. And similar to, well, actually, because there is a a number of topics that are in your current transportation element and for and are proposed to be retained. Emily and I decided to break it up into two meetings, and so tonight we're going to review for your consideration and discussion policies regarding the following topics: land use in transportation coordination, the intergovernmental transportation planning, your street system, and bicycle and pedestrian system. And then two weeks from now, on November sixth, we'll cover the rest of the topics, just travel demand management and environmental stewardship and planning, design, and maintenance, and then we'll present overall goals. It's my understanding that this is the format that you've taken with your other elements, so we'll be following it likewise here for transportation. So Emily, we want to move into our first set of policies. Great. So these are the land use in transportation coordination policies. And I believe your protocol that you've been following is, is I'll go ahead and introduce the policy, and Emily's there with a board to take notes and discussion. And Emily, just a quick logistic check. Do you want to go? My understanding is you like to go one by one, or do you want to consider all the policies with under that topic and then have discussion?
So the way that we have enjoyed doing it is we just read out each graph policy, read it out slow, we pause and let the commission reflect and or ask questions.
Okay. Great. So the first policy that for your consideration is to plan and preserve transportation system routes in capacity to support the planned growth based on projected travel demands. I will just note that that's a, this is an important policy because it does speak to Vision twenty fifty, even though it doesn't identify it. It says that we'll be looking at the the routes and the streets capacity for your planned growth.
Great. Keep going.
Okay. Next policy, ensure that street infrastructure projects are designed to harmonize with and enhance the distinctive character and visual identity of each city area.
Okay.
Maybe one question there?
Yes.
Do we do we have any kind of source document that that provides guidance on the visual identity we're seeking to preserve in each defined area of the city? I'm assuming, you know, we've got the historic district, obviously, and then Soqami Ridge would be the two in my mind. Are there any others that we need to be cognizant of? And that this needs to preserve, I guess, if that makes sense?
What are the two you said?
So I'm saying the 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 bottom line question is, do we have some source source document that says these are the distinct districts within the city of Soqami, and these are their defining characteristics? Therefore, when we have, you know, land use policies, transportation policies like this, where we're saying that we want to enhance a distinctive character and visual identity. Okay, we can go back and say, okay, well, you know, downtown, for example, is defined as, you know, eighteen hundreds.
Yeah, there was, in the land use, there was obviously downtown, there was the ridge, there was Fisher Creek and Meadowbrook.
Oh, those are, okay.
Yeah, we have others. We have this Soqami Falls area. We have Meadowbrook. We have downtown.
Yeah, rich and historic. Yeah, you're right, the falls area, I just get, we should.
Mill site. Yeah, so there's, there's a, there are areas more like neighborhoods, you know, kind of loosely identified, but there is a map in the existing comp plan that shows those areas.
Got it. So we've got the boundaries. That's awesome. And do we have visual characteristics that we seek to preserve in those? I don't know. Maybe the question isn't.
So this could, this could be, Emily, I'm sure you could, you might have a a different answer, but I was just going to offer that sometimes you would see these in a street standard manual if there's different cross sections that the cities adopted for distinctive areas, or it could be done on a case by case basis during road improvement projects.
I have the map, actually. I could show it if you let me share. Okay, so I'm going to share over you real quick here. You have to stop sharing, I think.
Oh, I do? Stop sharing. Okay.
Okay, this is the areas in the previous cop plan. So you've got on the left in purple, Soqami Ridge, and you've got basically one, two. In the light blue, actually, I'm just kidding. You've got in the tan on the top, you've got Soqami Falls. And rolling around clockwise, you've got the mill, light green. And then you've got the yellow is historic Soqami. The large area of darker green is Meadowbrook. But then that little pink area is Rattlesnake Ridge. And then the lightish blue area is Soqami Hills east and west.
Gotcha. And this is super helpful in terms of boundaries and and the different neighborhoods that we have. So that's, that's great. So my only question, and actually, maybe, Carla, maybe your solution is the best, right, which is we take it as they come? I think now there's a Supreme Court decision that said, I know when I see it, so maybe we take it as they come, and we know what fits in Soqami Ridge. We know what maybe fits, you know, is different in Meadowbrook, but I was just curious if there is any other source document like this that says, hey, these are the visual characteristics of Meadowbrook. These are the visual characteristics of Soqami Hills West. You know what I mean?
I don't think we've defined that.
Okay.
Yeah, but you know, we do have standards, right? So there was the ridge standards, Soqami one and ridge one and two set of standards, which we are now going to adapt to a citywide set of standards. I don't believe that we've identified any particular, I guess, you know, a design approach or or look for any one of these, other than maybe the ridge and maybe town center. We have, obviously, with town center phase one, two, and three, we are kind of following a common theme. You know, so we are having context sensitive design in the approach so that it all kind of matches. It's not a mishmash down, you know, in town center.
Right.
Yeah, but we haven't really defined that, at least, you know, in in any kind of document.
Okay. I think, yeah, maybe that's the answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sharing here. Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I just go back to the slideshow, right?
If you go to the Zoom button.
Zoom button? Can I just go sliding?
No, you have to reshare Zoom.
Zoom?
Zoom. And then go to share screen.
This?
Just, yeah. Go to share screen, share screen right here.
Okay.
Now, that's that one. Okay, and then yeah, now you start from the beginning.
Start from the beginning.
Slideshow right here. This button right here. From the beginning, right? Let's start right there. From the beginning, right there, and then you can click right, yeah, just.
All right. I think that button doesn't.
Okay, are we ready to move to the third policy on the screen? So ensure transportation improvements or strategies address development impacts in a manner concurrent with the city adopted levels of service standard as required by the G M A. Of course, G M A stands for Growth Management Act. So this is a policy that addresses level of service and concurrency. It is required to be included in your transportation policies.
Okay, any comments? Okay. And online, if you do have a comment, just raise your hand. I'll keep an eye on the participants. Okay, keep going.
Okay. Great. Last one on the screen, connect streets, sidewalks, trails, bicycle facilities, and transit routes and facilities were ever feasible with existing rights of ways to form an integrated, balanced, and convenient multimodal system.
Okay, I've got a comment on that. Does this mean we would want bike trails along two oh two railroad? Because let me tell you, it's I mentioned it last time, your head's on a swivel if you're on a bike on two oh two.
Okay, so maybe there should be a caveat here where it's, other than wherever, whenever feasible and safe.
Well, no, I think, great, it's just, it's just, you know, it's not it's extremely unpleasant to do that on a bike or even jog. Yeah, it'd be nice to have a little bit of trail there. I mean, you guys agree? Do you think we could have better bike trails?
Yeah, I agree, especially what this section you're talking about.
Well, and you got me to thinking like the Soqami to Preston, right? Does that how do you connect to downtown? I haven't ridden the whole thing or whatever, so is it, is there an easy connection?
No.
Or is that, that's an opportunity?
No. It's, there's a tribal issue to make that connection.
Oh, really?
Through the Two Sisters Return area, and the tribe does not want that trail.
Gotcha. You even if we, yeah. Well, so I think the question at hand, is there, is there anything we should adjust to encourage the development of workarounds or problem solves to that issue?
Yeah, I think I I think we ought to have more bike friendly trails, you know, kind of the point. So how we do it needs to be with the sensitivities, but I think we need more than we have. I mean, for example, I know kids could easily go from the ridge to the high school. But it'd be dangerous. I wouldn't recommend it for anybody to do that. I mean, you see them going up and down the parkway all day long because there's a trail there. I mean, and there is a piece of a trail that gets you into historic downtown. Again, once you get on that strip from the end, it starts to basically the Herffy Burger place, man, I'm gonna tell you, again, that's, that's, it'd be, that'd be opportunity. That'd be opportunity. Are you familiar with Town Center Phase Four? It's one of the projects that's in the future, which actually, yeah, which continues our Town Center Phase Three project, which is the multi-use trail, which goes from the falls essentially to to Town Center. We're redoing that trail. Right? And then Town Center Phase Four would go the other way towards Meadowbrook along two oh two, along the old rail path. There you go. Score. Score. Okay. Is it gravel or is it? Well, right now, that's not, there's nothing, there's a, there's a railroad track that runs there, right? But we could parallel that with a new trail. Ah, I see. Oh, very good. That's at least in, you know, that's out in the future, and of course, that's dependent on council approval and a lot of other things. Can we refer to that? What'd you call it? That's Town Center Phase Four. Town Center Phase Four? Could we put, you know, refer to that? Or is that too specific?
It is a bit specific. We could include it definitely as a reference in the appendancy, like we have done for other elements, our other planning documents that we rely on, like the downtown master plan and things like that.
Okay. And F Y I, there's, are you guys familiar with the G A R T, the Great American Rail Trail? You guys want to look at? Is that the Soqami Valley? No, well, sort of. So the Great American Rail Trail is a planned trail that goes across the United States, starting in Washington, D C, and goes all the way to the Washington coast. And there are, it's over forty two percent completed at this point and open and in use. And there are gaps, of course, like Wyoming, but but one of the gaps is right here in Soqami. And it is the trail that goes up through the Two Sisters Return. Now, eventually, that's going to be opened. And King County is taking the lead on trying to figure out how we're going to make that gap, how we're going to cross that gap, and it'll likely go right through the Mill Site Development. It'll probably go through Fall City and down Preston Fall City Road and connect up there. At least that's what county's looking at right now. We're trying to figure out how to connect to that, so bring more trails into a big trail network, multi-use trail network around the city. We have Town Center Phase Three, which is Phase One. There's the Riverwalk Trail. That's the other portion of it, which would eventually go over to Meadowbrook Bridge. And when we replace the Meadowbrook Bridge, we would like to add bicycle facilities so that we can make connections there, and then connect out to Meadowbrook, connect out to North Bend. That'd be. Wow. Thanks for the information. That's great. I'm looking it up right now.
You see that? I have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Kilcup?
In terms of your comment of the, you know, there's, there are some nice trails, and then there are some parts that are borderline dangerous. Could we look to add language that says something like continuous or unbroken?
Good boy.
And then the other piece I might add to the the list of connecting streets is some language that would speak to like key, key community locations or something like you were saying to the high school areas of gathering. So that those are the priority. Does that make sense?
Good. Community Development Director Otteja is noting it. Very good.
Thank you.
Get it?
Yes.
Could, could we add middle school onto that, too? With lots of personal experience watching very small children cross the roads.
Good, yeah.
Really dark and rainy. It's
All right. That was a power pack slide.
Yeah.
All right, these last, this is the slide that will conclude our land use and transportation coordination topic. So first policy on this slide, maintain a transportation capital improvement plan that balances and coordinates system improvements for all modes and supports economic development.
Okay.
Encourage multiple connections between new development and historic parts of the city when feasible.
Good.
Okay, and then these next two are highlighted as they are from Vision twenty fifty to ensure consistency with the multi-planning policies, multi-county planning policies, monitor and prepare for changes in transportation technologies and mobility patterns, and increase the resilience of the city's transportation system, and support strategies for security and emergency management responses. That's in the vein of.
Yeah, I don't, to rat hole this, however, when we look at transportation means, are we considering electric scooters?
We're we can. It can be part of a non-motorized emerging technology as well as electric bikes and the variety of electric bikes. I think that that, it does. Those two do speak to that first color-coded policy.
Yeah, I see those being used as unlicensed multi-block transportation, and we just ought to kind of keep an eye on that. Had the new technology, I was kind of thinking about that. Okay?
Okay. I have, I have a question.
Yes.
If we're moving, are we moving from? If we're moving, are we moving from the transportation? Or anything, are we going to be addressing pinch points? For traffic?
Yes, if we think it's, oh, no, we
Should that have been on both previous slides or are we going to cover that?
Wait, I'm sorry. I didn't quite hear what, what, which, which one?
Uh, like traffic pinch points?
Oh, that will, that will come when we actually do our demand modeling.
Okay.
With your transportation, with the growth target, we'll be able then to take a look at what areas are the pinch points when we do our future demand modeling. So actually it'll be sometime in the new year when we come back to you with that, the technical work that we're actually just beginning, beginning right now with our traffic counts to get our baseline traffic numbers. But yes, we will.
Would we have any type of goal laid out here to avoid those places or mitigate?
To, to, yes, and that will be coming up in a future slide. Yep. Okay, so moving to the next topic area of intergovernmental transportation planning. This, this one slide captures the policies for this one topic. So first bullet point, coordinate with WashDOT, Washington State Department of Transportation on the transfer of the Snoqualmie Parkway to state operational maintenance responsibility.
Good, that's done, right?
Okay.
Yeah, it's an aspirational goal. It, it's in our comp plan. I think there's a long-term desire to see it moved to the state, but the, the timing of it may be quite a ways out there.
It's a long story.
They paved it? So they're
Okay. Well, they didn't pave it. We did. But with a, with a state appropriation.
Ah, okay.
Okay.
Okay. We ready for the next goal? Our policy, sorry, coordinate with local and regional entities when traffic generated outside of Snoqualmie could impact city levels of service.
Hold on just a second. Councilmember Johnson wants to refer to
Yeah, just wanted to make, I just don't know how much the planning commission is aware of what's going on with that. I, I don't want to say too much, but just simply that what happened was that we got it paved, but that doesn't mean that now we never have to pave it again. The problems still have all the same problems that are causing the wear and tear. And five years from now, what's it going to look like? Ten years from now, what's it going to look like? It's not going to look the way that it does today. So if the question from Tramruzyak was something along the lines of is it now a part of Highway eighteen? It is not. And I think that that is what that top bullet point is referring to is the complete transfer of the road, unless I misunderstood.
That's correct.
Yeah. And that is a decision that we might get shortly and whichever way it goes, we can always ask again someday.
Okay, thank you for clarification. I don't know. Okay. So on the second bullet, could you, could you read that again?
Absolutely. Coordinate with local and regional entities when traffic generated outside Snoqualmie could impact city levels of service.
Okay.
Support and participate in cooperative regional transportation planning processes to ensure that city interests are reflected in regional transportation plans while supporting the regional growth strategy.
Oh, okay. I mean, how far does that cooperative regional go? I mean, I mean, they're, they're not going to put, they're not going to increase, they're not going to put light rail here. They're not going to add much more here than we've got. I mean, so is there something I'm missing or is that just, let's do what we can with what we've got?
No, I think, I think you're right. What this policy is acknowledging is that Snoqualmie is part of a regional planning body, right? King County as well as Peget's Home Regional Council. And what this policy says is that you're going to participate in all the things that you have to participate as being a PSRC jurisdiction. But you're also going to ensure that the city's interests are protected and reflected as appropriate.
We're just
We do that, and you do that through your staff, through their participation on the committees as well as your elected officials.
We're just committing to being team players.
Yep.
Yeah.
Got it.
But, but it also says you are being team players, but you also, you know, ensure that the city's interests are reflected and you, you know, you can present those as, as appropriate. So it's, it's broad and it, it is a team player type policy. You are correct.
I, I will say that that kind of makes me think about some reservations I had on the coordinate with local and regional entities bullet, which is, okay, I get it. It's supposed to be aspirational in nature, but you know, if we're, if we're just saying something like we want to be team players and support and participate in that bullet. I just, like, what are we trying to achieve with the coordinate with the entities? Because if the demand coming from outside of the city is ultimately impacting our levels of service, I'm not sure what just coordination is going to achieve when frankly, there are going to be fiscal impacts, right? And so I think that's really the heart of what we're trying to cover in that bullet. It just is maybe overly diplomatic and doesn't achieve the fact that we'd ultimately be looking for burden sharing. I don't know. Am I, am I reading too much into the intent of that bullet? Is that?
Um, the intent of the bullet is to, to check the box for a PSRC checklist, of course, that says we're going to all work together regionally. And that's what bullet two and, well, actually, all of these are, is these are intergovernmental transportation planning coordination policies. You are going to coordinate with local and regional entities regarding traffic that can impact and does impact your, your, you know, your, your city's capacities and congestion and level of service. The, the next level, which you brought it to, which is, well, what if it gets to the point where we start having to make some improvements based on pass-through traffic or, you know, traffic that's not generated from the city. And honestly, that really is a dilemma that comes from that all small cities and probably all cities to some degree, but especially small cities that have budgets that have to get stretched to all, you know, consideration of all the things. And so that while this policy speaks to that coordination, what you're, you're speaking to is, okay, well, what happens when that happens and what do we do? And that's really where your, your, your six-year TIP and your grant applications and making those cases to the state and other, you know, you're seeking your grants for those improvements are going to say, you know, this is not necessarily a Snoqualmie-generated capacity problem. It is a part of a larger region. And that's where that coordination can come in as well as speaking to it through, you know, grant applications.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense to me. Yes.
So thi- this bullet could be immensely beneficial to the city when we talk about things like getting new bus service, getting bus lines, getting a bus route to service our community. We're, we're starting that right now by having these discussions of participating in metro and also the, the King County bus service, so.
Yeah, and that's an excellent point that goes to bullet number three, because the, the regional growth strategy is, is founded in getting people out of single occupancy vehicles and onto transit and to non-motorized. And so having this policy stating that, you know, as a city, we're committed to this and we're supporting it is again communicating that and like Emily said, can be very helpful in those conversations.
Makes sense.
Thank you, yeah.
Great. So then the last one under this topic is, is a new one that is in response to Vision 2050 and just addressing the movement of freight. So support the safe movement of freight by establishing clear signage on routes that service trucks hazardous material transport and oversized loads.
Okay, we don't want s- s- terrible period, but okay, yeah. I got it.
Next.
So moving to our street system policies, the first one in this one does respond to Commissioner Kilkup about what's our standard for determining our pinch points, and that's level of service. And that's what this first bullet point refers to. So for vehicular transportation planning and development review, use level of service or LOS measures to evaluate system performance and needs, applying a peak hour LOSD standard for arterial intersections and an LOSE at side-street stop locations. And one thing I would like to just note is that after this PowerPoint was sent to the city, Emily and I had a, an additional conversation about perhaps including a citation or a reference, I guess, in this policy for how LOS is, is the definition of level of service and how that's measured. And that can be the manual on uniform traffic control devices and our, and so we could add a reference in this policy for what technical document the city would use in using, when defining level of service measurement.
The highway capacity manual, actually.
It defines Hi, okay, okay.
I have a question on that first bullet.
Please go. There's no Kilkup?
Yeah. Oh, okay, sorry. Um, I'm, I'm wondering if it would be appropriate on that first bullet if we made some reference to solving the level of service issue with a multimodal solution. So it's not cars only, but maybe some of the pinch is happening with drivers that would rather be on some other form of transportation, but it's not being provided.
Okay. I think I'll, I'll make a note of that. We can consider that when we do our forecast modeling and we see where our pinch points are, we can make some assumptions on what they call mode shift, meaning we can make some assumptions of how many trips are not going to be vehicles and can go to a non-motorized or a transit trip. So I'll make sure that we have a conversation about that, about, about what trips could be assigned to a different, a, a different mode than a single occupancy vehicle.
Yes, health worker.
Yeah, Carla, our consultant for Pateet, mentioned a manual and Jeff mentioned a different manual. I think Carla's mention of the manual would would get more at what mitigation would be required if an LOS, LOS was, was failing, you know, if, if, you know, a stoplight needed to be installed or a traffic signal or, or a stop sign.
Well, I meant, she mentioned MUTCD, the
Yeah.
Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. That's really the manual for what sort of signage you use, you know, applications and various things that driver experiences as are using a road. The highway capacity manual is the, the manual which defines levels of service.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I have made that known and I appreciate that.
Okay, see, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Tuskman?
Yes, and forgive me because I'm pretty sure as part of the presentation last session, we actually, where, where they went through the levels of service. But if my memory is accurate, D and E are actually kind of on the poor end of service, if, if my memory is accurate.
D is heavy traffic.
D is heavy traffic.
Slow traffic. F is failure.
Okay, right. So it was out of F, right? So I guess my, my, okay, awesome. Thank you. That was my memory. So my concern here then is are we just kind of setting a low bar as a planning factor? No?
No, no. D is actually pretty typical. C is your, your highest capacity, right? A is wide open, you know.
Free flow.
Right, right. B is a lot of cars. C is your most, the most cars per minute, right? That is your maximum capacity is C. D actually starts to slow down a little bit, but it's heavy traffic. It's signalized intersections. You might get, you know, you know, some stop and go, but D is actually a pretty high level of service.
And this policy is actually your current policy. So this is your current level of service. And this, this, the standard of D at intersections in E on site is actually very common.
Okay.
Is commonly used as the standard, the LOS standard. Occasionally you might see a level of service F being accepted in intersections where there's no, there's no possibility for improvement, like topography or critical area or, you know, something where it's expanding or you know, it's been looked at and there's no possibility of improving it. And then a jurisdiction might say, okay, we're going to accept F because there's nothing more we can do other than mode split and have different, you know, have people out of their vehicles and traveling in a different way.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Okay. Keep going.
Okay. Plan street development and redevelopment to create complete streets that accommodate pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users within right-of-way aligning with street classification and projected travel volumes where feasible.
I like that one. I like that one a lot.
Okay. And the last one on this is a, again, a nod to Vision 2050, support access connections and mobility for all and vulnerable populations through investment of equitable modes of transportation.
Okay.
Okay. Recognize and accommodate the special transportation needs of the elderly, children, and persons with disabilities in all aspects of transportation planning, programming, and implementation.
I assume that's required for all new construction per ADA standard, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yep. And then the last one is ensure safety enhancements and maintenance of infrastructure and transportation projects. Sorry, transportation improvement projects for all modes.
Okay.
Okay.
He hands up. I'm seeing his up. Okay.
Okay, so moving to the last topic that we will cover at tonight's meeting, bicycle and pedestrian system. Encourage new development to provide pedestrian and bicycle pathways that safely connect residential neighborhoods, commercial areas, schools, transit routes, parks, regional trails, and other destinations within the city. This kind of mirrors the conversation that we had with the policy earlier about key destinations.
Yeah, I like that one a lot too. Okay.
Okay.
Great.
This kind of relates to the last slide as well, but in terms of making complete streets, sometimes on pathways, especially in Europe, you'll see that they have the cobblestones and stuff, which is a real problem for ADA accessibility. But what a lot of those cities have been doing is just taking up a section that's wide enough for, say, a wheelchair, a stroller, or a rolly bag for those of us who travel a lot. Where that would be really flat and it doesn't mess up the look and feel of the cobbley streets, but it also allows a space for everyone. So that's just kind of a way to make a complete street that takes into account people with disabilities, but doesn't necessarily mean, and strollers, but doesn't necessarily mean that you're just meeting ADA laws.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, second bullet, consider opportunity Okay, second bullet, consider opportunities for multi-use trails separated from vehicle lanes on principal and minor arterial corridors and shared bicycle facilities on select collector arterials.
What do you mean by a bicycle facility?
Racks, I think, is what they're.
Racks or is it able to stop and never pick it? I mean,
Bike lanes. You know, there's different ways, different types of bicycle treatment.
Okay.
Okay. Collaborate with the school district to identify pedestrian safety improvements on school walk routes.
Okay.
Okay. And our final policy, ensure adequate bicycle parking in historic downtown Snoqualmie Ridge Neighborhood Center, public parks, large offices and industrial developments to promote bicycle travel and multi-mode commuting.
Okay. I'd actually like to go back to the bicycle facilities. They go up and down the parkway frequently enough and occasionally I'll see somebody come up the parkway pretty quick on a bike. Then if you get close, you hear a light hump, right? You hear the electric. Yeah. And that's pretty impressive. And I don't know if they need charged, but is there anything we should do to encourage that? Because a lot of folks who, you know, may not want to bike 10 miles by themselves with an e-bike probably would. And biking up the parkways, no fun.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know about what facilities we need because typically they have their own charger with the bike.
Right, they get their battery on there. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, maybe just.
You're saying like, like, just like charge point stations for cars.
Yeah, I mean, if you've got a, if you've got, we talked about new technologies and this thing goes to 2044. We already see e-bikes now.
Yeah.
I mean, so is there something specific to e-bikes that we could encourage that use because you'd much rather somebody on an e-bike safely than on a car, right?
So, yeah. Eases, eases parking congestion and.
Next. Yeah, next. Oh, I'm sorry, Christian Lambert.
Oh, sorry, you deleted the slide, but quick, two quick questions. One is, we'll get back to it. That's fine. With e-bikes getting up to, I mean, some of them over 30 miles an hour, or is there anything in here about looking at when we have multi-use bike pedestrian ways that we are limiting that somehow? Seems problematic.
Yeah, it's an emerging, it's an emerging potential conflict about that multi-use trail where in the past, well, and up to today even, you can consider this, the shared, the shared use trail where you could have pedestrians and bicycles with minimal conflict. But the e, the electric bike, the e-bikes and the different types of e-bikes can, is now starting to pose that question. Is there conflict? Is it in? And so I don't have that answer for it because it's actually an emerging issue in these shared use paths and conversation. And so I do think, again, it's going to be something that when you're considering a multi-use trail on a case, case basis, you're going to take a look at how you want to, how wide you want that trail to be. Do you want a pedestrian lane only, you know, kind of be thinking about that? We can certainly add something to this policy that talks about potential conflicts if you want to go there, but I do think it's an emerging issue that is just under discussion right now in a lot of jurisdictions. I had a very similar conversation with another jurisdiction. I'm helping with the transportation element, very same topic, so.
Why don't we add a bullet to this bicycle pedestrian system to say, because again, it's between now and 2044, right? I don't know, e-bike safety and use, some, something.
E-bike or just emerging technologies?
Well, yeah, and emerging, yeah, and emerging technologies because it could be scooters too. Yeah, yeah. But, but you meant he's right. Yeah, e-bike could come 30 miles an hour. I don't want to be on that trail. Personally, but you certainly don't want somebody with ADA or with a bunch of, you know, toddlers on the same trail. Yeah.
Joe with the strollers.
Yeah, or strollers, yeah.
Okay. Yep.
One other one, and this is, I guess, more towards the Meadowbrook side, but I didn't see anything in this policies that has to do with talking about the wildlife corridors. Specifically like Meadowbrook, we have the, you know, the herd of elk out there and we have bike paths and pedestrian paths. How are we?
Yeah, it's a good question. I'll take environmental stewardship is is our next, actually our our next round of policies that will take tackle at your next planning commission meeting. And so before that, I'll make sure that there's policy in there that speaks about wildlife corridors.
Cool. And thanks.
Okay, very good. So is that the last slide?
Yes.
That is the last slide.
Very good. Good discussion, everybody. Thank you. Okay. Community Development Director, do you want to? Anything else before we move off this agenda item? Are we good or anything else before we move? Okay. So then let's move to items of planning commissioner interest. And before I pull, could you stop sharing? I need to share something real quick. Let me share with you guys the two slides that I showed the CDC. And similarly, I'll send them to Community Development Director, and Ashley to give to the commission the two things that we had basically pitched. So okay, so what we do here first, we did housing. And just give a little background. Oh, I gotta share my stuff. Hold on a second. I always like to try to summarize and give context. So when we did the housing, we put together, it came out of, you know, basically three major things with a lot of ideas. And I think it lost the context. So I highlighted the context. I think most of you are here for that. But in case you weren't, I'll show you. If you look on the top, I actually took a little Google Earth of a cool thing of you look at the top of the ridge, you see the YMCA, see single family homes and, and, you know, something we were pretty proud of. But if you look down to appendix two, and this is something I actually pulled this morning, this is what the county was telling us, which is that we are woefully short of affordable housing. And I also highlighted the Panorama Apartments, which were in the 50 to 80, I think they were 60% AMI, but they're in that one range. And so although we, you know, might be pleased or not pleased with the development on affordable housing, we were woefully inadequate. One thing that unfortunately, these numbers, we were getting kind of hung up on these at the CD, at least from my perspective, I don't know, but don't, don't get too on the numbers because the council has requested that the 1500 allocation be lowered. Reconciliation process will happen after the cop plan. So but nonetheless, how we got here was the county and the state are saying, you've got to go deal with affordable housing. I made a comment to the CDC that I used to attend all of the state legislature output stuff up until the pandemic. And there's this one guy who's always gives these odd comments. And this guy is Larry Springer. And he goes, we have to all remember that the city government exists at the pleasure of the state and the county. And the reason I bring that up is it's not something we can do nothing about. So when you look at the plan that we came up with, go on the next thing, it is affordable, 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 affordability, affordable, affordability. So that's why. So the first one is sufficient mix of housing types. And again, we talked about this affordability, senior housing, healthy lifestyles, the quality of affordable housing, support local workforce, use developed means to keep affordable housing affordable, density bonuses, shelters for temporary placement, and then sustainable housing design, efficient, environmentally responsible, but affordable exempt from some things like floor area ratio regulations. There's a whole lot more that we covered, but this is the summary. Also, if you're curious, that is a picture of Panorama. We definitely took a shot at doing affordable housing. So that's what I shared with the city. And again, I'll make sure you guys get a copy of that. That's I shared with the CD. And let me see if I can. And this is the economic development plan that we reviewed a couple of times. And I was playing around PowerPoint. Wait, do you see it? Did I suddenly stop sharing? I see it on my screen. I mean, it's not coming up there. Okay. Yay. I was playing around it, yeah. Throwing some pictures in PowerPoint, same to it, but nonetheless, the Economic Development Commission did a tremendous amount of work and I wanted to do justice to it. So again, on the summary, I took the four areas and laid them out. Recruit, retain desired businesses, enabling city business climate alignment, investments line, use planning, and unique sense of place. So again, this was meant to summarize what the EDC did. There was a little bit enhanced discussion on the infrastructure, which is electrical vehicle charging, that there was a lot of interest of, yeah, we ought to put charge points in places downtown where we want people to go and highlight signage that, yeah, you come down here and charge your electric vehicle. But again, I thought, again, EDC did a good job, and this is the summary I showed. So I'll make sure you all get copies of that. I don't want to dwell on that, but I wanted everybody to be aware of, yes.
Just a quick question on the very last sentence on the last slide, the must-see attractions. Did that get any discussion at all?
Everybody agreed that In-N-Out Burger would be, would wave local and everybody would go for it. But no, you know, people, yeah, they, everybody agrees, all right, to get like the model train museum or and the things downtown. We didn't talk about the Woodman specifically, but I'd make a pitch for that. But ultimately, yes. Everybody's like, yeah, we ought to have those. And everybody kind of agrees that we might be able to do more with the skate park. Cool. With the ice rink that's
Yeah.
On the ridge that is very, very popular, but it's very kind of quiet.
Yeah.
Right? So, yeah, somebody said to me, you'd have to drive 30 or 40 miles to get another ice rink like that. So we have something very precious up there. Again, I don't know if we, other than the grand opening, we got real excited about it. I don't know if we are leveraging it as much as we could. So. But yeah, and then downtown, obviously. Okay, so that was, I wanted to highlight there. Now I'm going to pull everybody for items of interest. Vice Chair Tesman?
Yeah, two things. One, just off your last comment, my son's in one of the Snow King Hockey Leagues. And so we go to the the different rinks and everything. And I'll tell you, the only facility that I think is potentially better is the Kraken Community Ice Plex. Really? In terms of the Snow King and even the the other leagues, you know, Tacoma and elsewhere, we've got a grade A facility. So we're really, we're really lucky in that respect.
Yeah, no, I'd agree.
The second thing, the only, the only actual item of interest is just, well, maybe actually two, sorry. So first, I'm just curious, since we're knee-deep in planning, you know, the assumption is that we're going to see growth. You brought up a great point on, okay, through 2040, are we actually going to continue to see what we saw the last 10 years in Seattle and King County and specifically here? But my question focuses on on water. We know that, you know, specifically the the Seattle metro cities are already in a conservation status. I'm just curious how our own water supply is looking if we're in a, in a similarly constrained environment due to last year's snowpack.
And that's a good question. That's a really good question. Yeah, please.
So, right now, the state of our water resource is pretty good because, you know, we get about 65% of our water through a spring source. Right? That spring source flows about, well, it flows full 11 months out of the year. Our water right from that spring source is one cubic foot per second, 24/7, 365 days a year. So we are within our right to take all that water and it provides us enough water to, to meet our current needs. Except in the summer, when we do a lot of irrigation. At that time, once we start irrigating, and once everybody starts irrigating, our demand essentially doubles. And so we will eventually need to do water conservation measures as far as irrigation goes because as we grow, we will exhaust our water right. So we are approaching the limits of our water right now. We have enough to support the current development on the books, mill site, phase one. There's enough water to cover that. There's enough water to cover the full build-out condition on the ridge and infill projects and all of the allocations that we have already written down or already agreed upon. We have enough water to supply us going forward, you know, 10, 15 years before we really need to do more. We also have water projects. So aquifer storage and recovery, we are in the process of doing a feasibility study to do aquifer storage and recovery. Just real quickly, what we're trying to do is take in the winter when we have abundant water to increase our water right from the spring and then take it, pump it into the aquifer. And we will literally run that water from the, from the spring down into our South Well Field over by the high school and pump up our aquifer every year. And then what doesn't leak out is available to us for consumption. What we're trying to determine right now through a feasibility study is to figure out how much additional water we can store in our aquifer every year that we can use for consumption. That is a result of a lot of analysis. And we were fortunate to get a half a million dollar grant, stream flow grant from Department of Ecology to study that because the Department of Ecology, especially specifically YR7, which is the Snohomish Snoqualmie Skakomish Basin, is in, is keenly interested in putting more water in the ground because of all of these exempt wells. Water law in Washington allows anybody who wants, who needs water for their own personal use to drill a well and use it for their own personal use. So they are planning for the growth in King County and portions of Snohomish County. And they know that, well, they have to plan for 20,000 new wells over the next 20 years. And that's a lot of straws in the ground and they have to put that back somehow. So aquifer storage and recovery projects are good. Also, what happens when we put that water in the ground is that it kind of re-times the basin. So that water, which flows off really quick in the winter time, which can result in flooding, et cetera. But if we can put a portion of that into the ground and it leaks out over time, it maintains higher water levels in the river, which is good for the fish and the in-stream users. So we're hoping to get that. We may get as much as anywhere from 40 to 100 acre feet of, of additional water, which is not a lot, but is enough to help us with our resiliency because our water rights, we have an instantaneous rate, which is how much we can draw at any one time from any one of our rights, and we have an annual limit on how much we can draw, you know, over the year. So we have to stay within those, projecting out, we have enough water to cover our mill site phase one development, mill sites phases two and three. We don't really have a firm idea what those are yet, but we're going to probably run into issues trying to provide water if they propose to build out to the full extents that they are talking about, which seemed high in the sky to me. I mean, 5,000 jobs. I don't know. But, you know, we'll see when they, when they actually come. They may have to bring their own water. They may have to go find a water right, which is going to be difficult because there are no water rights for sale. You can't, we've, we've been looking for years and they're just, nobody's selling. And if they are selling, we're in a bidding war and, yeah. Water resources are expensive.
But I'm glad you're here for that question. That was a really good question. I asked this question years ago that when we irrigate today, we actually use fresh water to irrigate. And couldn't we use gray water?
Not entirely. No, we do. Quite a few of the, the public spaces in the city of Snoqualmie are irrigated with reclaimed water.
Excellent.
So during, yeah, during the, the, the summer, we pump almost all, not all, but almost all of our water that comes out of the wastewater treatment facility up the hill to Eagle Lake. The golf course takes about 70% of it and we use about 30% of it to the tune of about 18 to 20. to the tune of about 18 to 20 million gallons a year. The, the city uses to irrigate public spaces, so including the parkway and the business park and, and some of the parks downtown.
That's good.
There's a project which is coming up. You're going to see here the reclaimed, what we call the Eagle Lake irrigation or Eagle Lake reclaim basin. We need to separate the city's water from Eagle Lake. We can't pull water out of Eagle Lake anymore because of changes to reclaimed water rules that the state's imposed on us.
Okay. Again, I'm glad you're here for that question.
Very thorough answer.
Any other questions on water?
No, thank you.
That was, that was a thorough.
We got an education.
Anything else?
The, the only thing, it's not an item fraction, but obviously it's fresh news. We, we saw the Rite Aid bankruptcy. I just want everyone, I hope we're thinking about the contingency if Bartels, at Snoqualmie at least closes. We, we know that holes in, in what are essentially anchor stores and retail are just dreadful to, to try and fill. So just put that on the radar.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Kilkup?
Nothing more for me.
Okay. Commissioner Crone?
No items for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Smith?
No, nothing. I would, just echoing what Commissioner Testman said, I think, you know, the same, I, I think of the same thing with like Chase Bank right there next door to them too. I know, I, I think I saw some headlines that they're closing quite a few branches across the US. So it's, yeah, those are, those anchor tenants are big holes. So hopefully we are. Hopefully we're able to preserve those. Not, not an item fraction, but just an actual item for concern.
Okay. And I have nothing further. So with that, we move to the next agenda item, which is upcoming schedule.
Hello, everyone.
Keep, you keep going down to like slide 25 or six. For some reason, that's 2022. Keep, keep going down. Yeah, yeah, keep going, keep going, keep going. Here we go. There we go.
We should, we should be just showing the the schedule 2023.
Yeah.
Is, are we able to take a PDF of that and just?
I think the document that was sent to me also included 2022. But yeah, here is the updated list through November 6th. As you can see, we're still going to continue working on transportation goals and policies. And starting in November, we're going to begin capital facilities and utilities.
Is that mixed use final plan amendment? Is that a placeholder? Is that going to hit next meeting?
Well, that's on the agenda. So we do have Senior Planner Jonathan Kessler online who can speak to that.
Jonathan, you're muted.
Good evening, everyone. I'm, I heard a reference to, and I'm coming up, I'm sorry, it was the master, the mixed use plan. Is that correct?
Yes. The question is, are we going to have that on the agenda and on November 6th? Or was that a placeholder? Understand it's on the agenda.
It's a placeholder. It's our goal to have, excuse me, the preliminary information coming together on that to kind of give a preview of going forward to when, you know, it'll be ready to be discussed in more detail and, you know, move forward through the process to adoption.
Okay.
And I, I did fix this future agenda list. I'm not sure why those other pages are still showing up because I, I update everything towards just this one PDF page. So I think those are just accidentally included because that's what we had had from last meeting. And then of course it was updated for this meeting, but, but I was out of town at a conference at a PRR last week. So American Planning Association, Washington Chapter Conference.
Okay. No, I was just glad when I scrolled down, I found this one. We saw, we saw that 22, 2022 one a lot. So, okay. And then.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Scroll down to the next page. The next, yeah, that one. Okay.
Do you have any questions?
So we got the COP plan throughout 2023. We talked about the tax exemption. Mixed use final plan amend. Yes, Snoqualmie Mill Design Standards TBD, wireless code update and sign code update. Is all this in 2024? Or is it so far out, we can't even, can't even think about it?
It, it's not so far out, we can't think about it. I think that the commission will have some more room to do additional work after we finish this environment and climate resilience element. We, we haven't talked about climate resilience, but we're still, we're at this point, we're anticipating that we might be able to continue working on that while we work on the COP plan. But yeah, I mean, these are code amendments that could be squeezed in, you know, before we start implementation of the COP plan. And they're long overdue. You know, the wireless code, the sign code, emergency housing, critical areas ordinance, probably not closer till 2025 or 26, but. Yeah.
Okay.
I would say that the multifamily tax exemption, it was on there as a possible item. And it, it bypassed the commission after some council discussion and that item's been completed. So we could, we could cross that off the list. And so it doesn't have to be, it didn't, it doesn't have to continue.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Thank you. All right. That has been a long, reasonably longer and productive meeting, but thank you, everybody. At this point, I move to adjourn the meeting at 8:25 today on October 16th, 2023. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Nice meeting.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.